Feeling and understanding and moving forward community discussion. And there's a series of events. I'm gonna announce the other event that will be happening this week. And I want everyone to attend to every one of them if you can. Again, welcome and thank you. What we're going to do is we're gonna pick out cards. And I want you to put questions or solutions or suggestions or whatever's on those cards. And Jimmy's black, please them. And if the addresses are countless, then they will answer. They will answer those questions or they will address your issues. So again, welcome. That's how we're gonna do it right now. And if we might have changes within the tree, but just flow with me. Just flow with me. Again, we're gonna have a peaceful, respectful discussion of how we can move forward, how we can heal. And I again, I thank you for being here. And we're gonna open with a prayer by Bishop McKinnon. Bishop, please. I know you didn't know this, but...
That's community right there.
The community. We're looking for us to get to the sand of the purpose of promoting community fellowship and reconciliation. More than 50 years ago, I think my mother-in-law said that we in America had a choice. It's in the community, not chaos. We're here today because we made a choice of community rather than chaos. That's right. Our father was wrong, thank God. We're thankful for the grace of the neighbors who love children. We pray that they will love one another even as you taught us to love. Our nation is in crisis, our communities are at risk. And we need your guidance, your protection, your wisdom and your spirit of justice and righteousness. Speak to our hearts and to us, the desire to truth and justice and righteousness. So that we will indeed become the beloved community. The name of Jesus Christ.
Do, Myrtle?
Yeah.
You're talented.
It's a towel.
What we will do is if you can stand up here, line up on the side. Line up on the side. And we will take your answers orally. And we're trying to keep it to 7:30.
We're gonna be here till 9:00.
So we will take your answers.
You're up here first. You're safe. I'm on the third. You were fourth.
I'm fourth.
Did you already ask?
But again, we will have shutdown at 7:30. So try to work answers to your questions to one question. Like what does the manager...
We got all night.
We can't, I'm sorry, we can't.
You guys got overtime.
We got time. We got time. Hold up. Get going.
Down.
Show on the road.
Yes, ma'am.
All I wanna know is, any council member from the fourth district, what is your job? I'll just ask whoever's job. That's what it takes like 10 minutes.
Don't lie, girl.
What I came on to do is, you know, public safety is my number one issue. When I came on, public safety was my number one issue. That's why we're having this economic development, creating quality jobs and also making sure that our infrastructure is intact. That's what I'm doing. I'm trying to build this community up. We've already seen the first Walmart. I'm sorry, ooh, Walmart. Walgreens in on Euclid. First Walgreens south of the 94th. We have a Skyline Hills library coming up. It will open in October. We have sidewalks on Martin Street. Never had sidewalks on Martin Street. I'm trying to build District 4 so that we can be proud and so that other people can come and spend their hard earned dollars in this district. We spent 1.9 billion dollars. That was our spending power in 2014. Over a billion dollars went outside of our district because we didn't have Walgreens. We didn't have restaurants. We don't have retail. So that's what I'm trying to do. That's what my job is as a city health.
Hello, mic check, mic check. Hi, my name is Free. I represent members of the community and reclaiming the community. And I just wanna know, and I just wanna state also that I'm a licensed clinical therapist. I'm a psychotherapist as well as a community organizer. And I wanna know more about what is the police force doing other than recruitment to address the re-traumatization that the community experiences? Death after death, murder after murder and no accountability. Secondly, I wanna know, I mean, we're talking about training and, you know, I understand that when a police officer becomes a police officer, they go through a psychiatric eval. That's that one moment in their career that they go through a psychiatric eval. What else is being done to provide support? So I'm gonna play the other side. What else is being done to train up and to educate and to provide support to not only the police officers so that they can also do a better job at policing or community policing and interacting and building with our community? It's not about just going to the mosque or going to southeast. It's about genuinely building with this community. And that can happen if accountability is not made. So I wanna know what else is being done specifically other than recruitment?
Thank you.
You talked about trauma-informed care. We practice trauma-informed care. I have seen Jacob Brown in here. That was a great experience. We talked quite a bit about that because, you know, we talk about when a community member continues to see violence, continues to see things, experience assaults or sees them, but that's a trauma. And so what we talk and with our officers and trained officers is to take that into consideration. Is that maybe the reason why the individual is acting the way that they are is because they're so deeply hurt that they've seen trauma? And to take that and carry it in a compassionate way. So those are some of the trainings that we give.
What?
Hello, I know I gotta talk fast. You told me I had a few seconds. So real quick, I just wanted to first address what I've been hearing. But that we are not Chicago. We are not Ferguson. But we are Ferguson. We are Chicago. When I'm watching the murders up there, I'm seeing that. I feel that. I can't, I can't speak for everybody, but I feel like I speak for a little bit. But when I watched this young innocent man get murdered, I watched it at least 25 times and it felt like that was my homie even though I never knew him. So I am. I am that voice. I am those things. So when the cops pull me over, because I've been dealing with this my whole life, this is not a new situation. You know, all the cameras and being on social media is a new thing, but it's not new. And we've been, since the police have been formed, it's been this situation. So I think without, if we're gonna talk about healing and reconciliation or whatever, we need to address first that there is a problem, okay? And I've yet heard that recognizing that there is a problem and it's not the community's problem. We've been getting bullied my whole life and beyond my life. So what is happening once we recognize, because it's easy for me to get classified as a gang member. What, how easy is it for an officer to be classified?
As a murderer. How about a murder?
I'm losing homies every day with gang injunctions and extra, extra time. They're gone for years away from their kids. But once this officer is acknowledged as a racist, what are you, what are we doing to get them out of here? And I mean, I really, I just, I don't, I really honestly, to be truthful, I don't expect there to be an answer. But I just wanted to put that out there because this is not, it's not just Baton Rouge. Last week, my brother with my organization who takes care of senior father was taken to jail overnight because he's by gang detail because he looked like a gang member driving Mercedes Benz in Scotty. And let out that night with poop. So this is a day-to-day life that we live. You might not understand it because you didn't live that life, but I feel this every day. So what do we do with those officers? And I have his name in his badge and I'd love to give it to you, okay? Because I would like for us as a people, because I'm a challenge us too and my brothers, we need to start documenting this stuff and start addressing them and get their gang profile because they're gang mates too, okay?
Thank you, girl.
Healing happens when we win, when the one who is doing the traumatizing takes accountability. That's when healing happens.
Thank you.
Okay, Jose Armando Garcia. You recognize that name, Zimmerman? Tom Sum, Lamontre Jones, Anthony Ashford, Ray Sean Cole. Okay, 593 lives stolen by the San Diego PD since 1980. Why? Why is there no, well, actually, United Against Police Terrorist D does have a criminal record for San Diego police. Why don't you guys hold your police officers accountable instead of having the public do that? Number one, okay? Number two, emotional intelligence. I brought this up to you guys before. I've been to your other board meetings. I've been to your guys' other press conferences. I've asked you guys, do you guys provide emotional intelligence training to your officers? I was lied to once. You guys told me the new officer's coming on would. This last conference, you guys confirmed that, no, you guys do not have any type of emotional intelligence training for your officers. Do you know what that means? That means that your officers are out there shooting people because they're scared. It's perfectly human to be afraid, but once you put that badge on, like you said, Ms. Zimmerman, that it's not just a shiny thing you guys wear. You guys need to be professionals. You guys need to put your scariness aside or something. Go to therapy. Go get some emotional intelligence training. We have plenty of people in the community who do that, like Project Aware. We have a lot of people in this community sitting down right now who can tell you guys how to take care of that. But you guys aren't reaching out to us individually. You're having these circuses. Come into our community, please. Ms. Cole. Thank you for sometimes showing up to some of the southeast San Diego events that we put on. First of all. I'm real quick, I apologize. If you could please reply to at least the invitations you received, that would be very respectful. Secondly, you guys, we have a brand-new private prison opening up again off of Boston Avenue by the CCA, okay? We gotta stop that. These are private prisons only in Baguio Logan, only in southeast San Diego. Why are they not in La Mirada? Why is our mayor accepting these private prisons? Thank you.
Is there a, is there a?
Oh, it's okay. Well, she's gonna answer first. She gonna answer. She gonna answer. Emotional intelligence, why do you guys not have it? And Ms. Curdo, why do you not attend all events? Those were the questions. Were you accept a private invitation to your office? No, 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 no. That was a question. Why don't you provide people, police officers with emotional intelligence training? You don't think they need it? That was a question, guys. That was a real question. Ms. Zimmerman?
You know, we're gonna, the chick's gonna listen and she'll respond after your question.
Let me see your faces. She gonna respond after.
You're on record.
Maybe less. We continue this way really, maybe less. So I wanna try and get every question in and I can't applause for next question.
Well, I'm a little bit frightened to ask that question because I don't know.
Hello. Hello.
Well, let them try.
That's right.
Well, my question involves the citizens review board. And I have some really grave concerns about the fact that it doesn't have subpoena power and that it doesn't have independent investigation. As I'm sure most people in this room know, when there's a complaint that's given to the citizens review board, the police themselves do the investigation. And the problem with that is even looking at it in the best terms, even look, I hope at least you can understand that we as a community, that it's difficult, if not impossible, for us to have trust in that type of process. Even if, and not discussing, you know, the job and stuff, I don't think in particular, but for us to trust the process, we have to know that investigation is independent. And I don't understand why there is such a pressure about that. Why, why does the CRB not trust itself?
Why are you judge, executioner and jury?
To do an independent investigation and to use the subpoena power wisely. And also, that's the first part of my question. The second part is, and I read the charter and I read, you know, I read five or 15 lines. My question is, the mayor, I believe, and I've also been told is that we're in local administration. I led with Captain Kate's office. And I was told that the mayor actually does have the power to use the CRB subpoena power and independent investigative court power. And my question is, why hasn't the mayor independently done that? Why are we going through the shenanigans of this wild damn ballot? Instead, the mayor just going ahead and doing it. He's happy with what he's doing. Can he be done in the end of that? Because we do have independent legal counsel now for us in our data. Yes, we don't have subpoena power yet, but we do have independent legal...
I'm not aware of the mayor's agility to grant this system of power requirements that he has.
There you go. Be honest. Thank you for being honest.
Whoa, we have a counsel. Hold on, please.
No. Oh, well, it's gone.
The charter review committee did review the charter section that has to do with the citizens review board. Several of the changes that were made there were to make it a responsibility of both the mayor and the city council. By ordinance, we can change things and that's why they're not all put into the charter. Once that is approved by the voters, that will be the opportunity to then lay out the issues.
You're not in line, right? Are you putting something?
You do have the provision in the charter to investigate in custody vests and any vests, shooting vests.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Oates and I wanted to, number one, identify myself as the question, the submitter of the question that is the last card question, the talk about history. I'm a little bit lost in the translation and I appreciate that because I was writing emotionally and rather quickly. It started out with, "Thank you. Thank you very much for hosting this very important and critical conversation." I wanted to make sure you guys are not lost in what I have to offer. Then I followed up with, "History." And this is how, I'm hoping I'm able to frame this. And please bear with me because I am very likely the shyest one in the house. And English is not my first language, so I'm all over the place when I get Russian. This country, as everybody knows in this house, has a shameful, shameful history of racism. Everybody in this house knows that historically, law enforcement agencies and policy makers have been an arm, have been an arm, an implicit arm of those horrible policies. Fast forward to 2000, which is really not fast forward because we're still fighting. We're having same conversations. What I would like to know, clearly not going to use all the, uh, training.
Imagine what different customer practices we do wake up every Sunday morning. Some of you may get up, you're resting, drink a cup of coffee, you could go out for a walk, read the newspaper. Somebody else has a different customer practice. We could do it for all of you. Imagine tomorrow that something, say, you must change your customer practice and you must do it immediately and have to get it right every single time. It's going to be...
Let me get back in line.
So there's a learning curve that comes with that. You've got muscle memory.
Inside, you run now.
All the different... And we will take a look at it to see what we're missing as to why we're not... So ready to... That we have discussed, uh, to a great length. I encourage you to take a look at our policy, which is online. And, uh, so you know the challenge.
Right there. Two milli.
Uh, this question, uh, from the mayor of Cole. I have a question and then I would like to comment. What resources are we working on to bring to this community and to District 4? Which adds one grocery store that serves over 50...
In your district.
And there's no retail stores, there's no places to shop.
White street is always having a hard time coming into southeast San Diego.
We're spreading elsewhere. Everything's not used out of this, but you're gonna have to get a positive elsewhere. What are you doing in terms of working with local, national, international businesses to bring some resources and jobs into this community? Chief Parker, the reason you're having a problem, there are no resources in this community to give these young people something.
Money, money, money.
Politicians in the room as well. I see you. I know you're out there. Every election, uh, a year, I see your signs upon wood and ask you to make a promise. I promise you this coming election, I won't forget your face nor your name. People go out and vote, make some change.
Change is the operative word.
Oh, good. Again, I know that in 2014, there was an analysis done. It's been, in this community, spent 1.9 billion dollars in this community. Over a billion dollars outside our community for restaurants, for retail, in Rocco's Living Room. And that, so I know that, so, and on drug stores, on drug supplies. So that's why when we went out and asked, can we get a drug store in this community? Basically, the only ones that said, okay, we'll come into your community. It's Walgreens, that's the only one. So now we have a Walgreens off of Euclid. So they came in. If they're willing, they'll come into the community. Now, I've been to...
Then you're not doing your job right.
I did some calls. I went to, to other... I went to other places to try and get a grocery store. And with the Jacobs, Reginald Jones, the executive director, uh, the Jacobs, Reginald Jones. Reginald Jones, he's the Jacobs. We went to two cities to try and get grocery stores. Everything on Bonds and Albertsons had wanted to come in. Bonds and Albertsons did not want to come in. So we tried to go and there is, there's, there's grounds, groceries that wanna come in. They wanna come in, we just have to get a place for them. So we have that, we've done that. We've been to other cities to do this. So we're trying to get more. We have Skyline Hills Library, a library that needed to be built. A library that needed to be built. That library is coming online October 2016. Skyline Hills Library, brand new, beautiful, $13.9 million library in our district is coming online. Those are the things. We just have to work, make sure that we have, we have also a senior center in Tuba Park that we have $500,000 designed for senior centers for seniors that have been, that have been coming to Tuba Park. Monday through Friday, they did not have a place to come to accept a candidate. It's in the shed, so we're getting that done. So we're getting things done. We're working with the Jacobs and make sure that we have retail, we have Build Up. Build Up, you might know about Build Up?
Don't get snappy, Myrtle. Come on, girl. Come on. Come on. Have some manners. That's not cool. Set the example.
Next question.
We have Build Up. It goes with, uh, I don't know. Build Up, yes, it's coming with the retail.
She found only a team her ass. I know. She's a boy. She's probably in the line right here and I feel like she's feeling in time. We need to find...
Oh, okay. Okay.
The gang, Carvinte.
Oh, he's next. Excuse me, sorry. He's next anyway.
Thank you. I'm Laurie Zell and I'm a senior assigned with our hurdle. And I just wanted you folks to know that Myrtle, I can't begin to tell you how many, how many times she's out there begging for grocery stores.
Grocery stores!
You guys need me. Cause I, I, I'll get it. You need me.
Because all the time, she's constantly advocating for businesses, for economic development, for sidewalks, for senior centers, for food stores. She is constantly... You guys don't have attention. I don't blame you.
But you're asking for help. She's an executive.
And all I wanna do is let you know...
This is judge, jury and executioner right now. That's all we're looking at. Myrtle just ran real quick right now. Actually, I think we the only ones knowing what's going on because they love the state. Maybe, I don't know.
I have been writing, well, I have this written in the past five years. My question is this, with everything going on, how, what are you guys going to do about educating our children about what's going on? How, what are you gonna do about going into the classroom? Tell them how to respond to police, what they're supposed to be saying, how they're supposed to be acting? Because some of these conversations are not, are not taking place in our homes. So they need to be happening in our school systems. And what are you guys as people going to talk about that? Another thing, it's summertime.
That's what my organization...
A lot of your problem is with us in the community. How are you, what are you guys doing to prevent what's going on? There are no, there are barely any summer programs going on because you're not funded for it. You guys are funding other stuff. You guys need to be funding...
Black police departments.
You need to be hiring college educated people, which there are so many that are unemployed here in San Diego. They have been to college, they know what they're doing.
That they don't turn on.
That's an automatic one. Slight catch. Who's wearing a body camera?
I'm in... For District 26, years I've been canceling rec center. And my job is to try to keep you guys' kids off the streets.
Thank you.
Very good.
But because you don't have the funding for the cancel rec center.
Oh, but we got...
So what do we do so that, so that you guys don't have that bad job? Because we're funding our children now, so they won't be those bad guys that you guys are catching. We need to catch these children right now. We need funding, time. I've seen you guys spend some of our rent payments when you guys wanna be put in office. And then guess what? I don't see you no more. I can't even get windows at the rec center. My husband is playing on the same field and he 50 years old. We need to do something for our children so that they can be taught right now. So the children want to catch them later. The first thing that we are taught as black people is the Lord's Prayer. That's the first thing our parents teach us. The second thing is, remember kids, officer is officer friendly. Every black child up in here has had that speech. I have a 27-year-old son that's at home and every day, every day and every night, I cry because I don't know if my son is gonna come back on to me. But I still think that this speech that I'm not giving this child, it's a speech to six years old in Ford Whiskey. Whatever you do, drive slowly through through Skyline. Don't turn up no music. If the police stop you, I want you to be very, very respectful. How many of you guys are giving your children that speech? Right now. So that's why I'm like, get your kids out of here.
Very close.
I don't know what's funny. What we're saying is, right now, we just need you guys to order us so that you won't have to arrest us. So you won't have to beat our children. That's what we want from you guys. Help us up, you. We've always been taught to run for our health and those blue uniforms have always been our help. So help us up, you.
My business is known that if there's no workers on my budget priorities, it gets funded because I'm not visiting there. We know I've been through that. And I told the director, you know, there's, the floor is cracking. Everyone is cracking. And I saw that, we're addressing that.
But if you need help from them, they'll show up. If you're addressing them, they'll show up.
So before I ask my question, I wanted to make something very clear. There's a few words that have been thrown up there from the panel. One of those is emotional. Let me be very clear, I am not emotional. These people here are not emotional. This is not... These people here are not emotional, this is nothing new. And it's sad that it took the deaths of a couple of police officers in Houston to have gathering where we need to talk about the trauma that we're experiencing. Being sat down on the sidewalk in Central Building, being pulled over in front of the Walgreens that supposedly are our community.
Get that other bike, cut on the...
Another thing that we're talking about is implicit bias. Everybody has implicit bias. Let me tell you something, there's a big difference between my son, who's 16-years-old, and his implicit bias. And implicit bias of a police officer with a badge on his chest and a gun on his hip. We need accountability for these people, this is not equal. This is, there's a power and difference. The last thing that I'm gonna put up there, and this leading up to the question. The idea that these police officers are able to say what they think is a lie, and we know that. Because what they say with that badge is on, and what they talk about with one another is two totally different... There's a reason why we have to have the Black Police Officers Association. And that's because there's a problem in the force, and we can't change that problem. That problem needs to be dealt with by the force first, but more importantly, the pressure needs to come from our elected officials.
Black back, Myrtle, right.
We've had meetings about these...
Where's that attitude now?
Talked about racial profiling, talked about all those things. And every time we're in those meetings, you know what they say? They say, oh, we can feel really bad about the perception.
Very...
About the perception, our reality of walking down the street isn't true, that we're not smart enough to know the reality of what is likely to be followed over by a police officer. And there's a difference between knowing your rights and being treated with dignity, and being treated with respect, and you can address those issues. So, the question for you is this, does racial profiling exist? And if so, what are you doing to address it? And if not, what world are you living in?
Can I get a pound, pound? Damn.
Go ahead, question please.
Uh, the leader still is going. Um, well, the chief possibly, uh, was appointed, the chief, he had a meeting. And the community also came to me and said, you know, Mergle, there's this racial profiling going on in this community. I said, chief, you know, uh, I met with the chief, and I said, you know, the community is having this racial profiling going on.
But what do you think? What do you think? I'm asking your opinion.
Again, the community is...
We have statistics, not just the community, the department is in research. Black people are pulled over three times as often as white people. She not answering the question.
So, I let you talk, let her talk.
That's what they're saying, gripping racial profiling. So, that's why...
This world is crazy, this world is messed up, we all know that. I just wanna know, how can I not fall victim to this system? Because this system itself is messed up. Thank you for your guys' time, thank you for coming out to me.
Thank you, sir, thank you for speaking.
Um, alright, uh, so, I know how the police officers are always like, pulling around, pulling a sofa, so, why do black people only meet with officers? Remember they're getting arrested. You have to see them in our communities and friends.
That was strong.
Our police officers are, and y'all have been in the community a lot, they're, they're in a great, they're in our community.
Do you guys recognize a racial profiling?
They want to participate, they're at Better Block, if anyone went to Better Block, they are at Better Block. I don't even know if anyone has participated, but they, they, that's where they all...
Have you participated?
They're in their community, they're too, uh, they're always there. When I'm there, I see our police officers, they're there, uh, and I know that because they're there.
Can you answer that question?
That question, the question didn't even get answered.
There's votes in the parade too.
Uh, my question is, um, in San Diego, our communities are very diverse, and it's often said that we recognize that. However, despise and race in diversity, how can police break down language barriers with our community in order to ensure efficient communication? And prevent escalated conflict when someone is stopping someone on the road or at home? And I want to answer.
I wish you would answer the voice question first, though.
While this period is southeast, right here talking about this community, there's a lot of diversity. And when police officers go and stop people in their cars or at their home, there's people who speak Spanish or who speak different languages. And if they're not interpreter, guess what? They will get killed. I experienced that myself, my father was at home, and they came rushing to our house thinking there was a suspect there, there was no suspect there. Luckily, my neighbors who spoke English told my father, get outside and put your hands up, you can make it shoot. They would have shot my father because they did not have someone that could speak Spanish. What are you guys gonna do, what are the police officers gonna do about having someone who speaks different languages when they enter someone's home? What are you guys gonna do about that? Because a lot of them is law.
You know, this goes back to, uh, when we talked about recruiting. In, uh, many of our neighborhoods, there's many different languages that are spoken. So, again, I encourage, uh, we're hiring, we're hiring bilingual, tri bilingual, um, that's things that is, uh, very much a desired quality that we're looking for. So, again, that's, we've got over 990 positions open. And we're ready, you're talking about jobs, you're talking about, it's a common difference. I'll tell ya, listen, we're right now, we have a lot of applications, we're here, you can talk to any one of us. We would love to have you come to our police department, uh, especially, what you said, you have, uh, bilingual, tri bilingual, speaks Spanish, speaks other languages. You take our mid-city division alone, there's more than 52 languages that are spoken in that division alone. So, it's incredibly important that we continue to hire people that speak other languages.
Can you answer, excuse me? Can you answer how the boys are gonna ensure that they don't get killed? He asked the question, can you answer it? Do we need to hire more people? Is that how we do it? Can you answer that?
That's what we're trying.
That was what we're trying, what we're saying, when you poop, what's in there?
District 4, y'all.
And sure, they don't get killed, even though they're trying to provide for you, they're now serving. So, how can they do that?
Without hiring people, we don't need to hear nothing. We don't need to hire anymore police officers.
First of all, I want to say, like I said, my own convention, it's very important for us to be here to listen to everyone. I tell ya, we say, and I'm gonna say it again, we have such a wonderful community, wonderful relationship with our community.
It is a community. Shelley, who are you talking to to get these facts?
I'm waiting, it's okay, I'm waiting. I just had a moment to think about, and we are willing to listen. We are here, not only mine, but our chief's, our captain's, and part of having a wonderful relationship is that we have to be willing to listen. One of the other things that we talk about, we talk about community policing, how we can all work together, because it really does come back to communication and community policing. Let me ask you a question, this one by Shawnee.
Let her ask this question, I'm so interested.
I understand the frustration, but you can't get everybody in.
It's not just tonight, you know, community policing is not a one-time class, it's not a one-time town hall. It's something that has to be nurtured and enhanced at every single opportunity. And this is one of those opportunities, so let's continue to work together to have that dialogue. Have that dialogue, continue to, all of us, continue to work together.
Do, do you wanna get, take my place today? Cause we only have five minutes, we're gonna have to talk. She really is gonna write, she really is.
And the criteria, as we all know, I'm sure you guys know already, is very unconstitutional. You can't wear color, specifically black and brown people, you can't wear a certain color, that's unconstitutional. I don't have the right to associate with my own brother, that's unconstitutional. I don't have the right to, to, uh, associate my own neighborhood that I grew up in, my grandmother been living in the park since the second. I've been stopped up 50 times in Lincoln Park, and I'm not from a gang. So, that criteria for being is very, very unconstitutional, and it's not, again, it's not, it's not even called a gang. It's just a lot of big crimes. So, how are the documented kids, even adults, aren't committing crimes as gang members before a crime was ever being committed?
Putting them in the CTA, putting them in private prison.
I can speak for everybody, on that criteria, things need to be taken off. I should have the right to hurt any, if you're going to these kind of, they got swashbucklers, they're not gang members. You don't, you don't pay for it, you don't, you don't pay for it. If I don't, I don't support, if we can't, we can't, we can't raise these to the 50s. We have, we're gonna have to, we're gonna win that. So, we're gonna wear that color with pride, we're gonna have tattoos with pride. You guys have tattoos, you guys wear colors, and you guys walk around with pride. So, we have the right to do so in the Constitution, but you guys are stripping the Constitution away from us, so you guys are not changing it. And I'm asking, that's what you guys need to do. You guys need to change that criteria, because kids are being locked up at a rapid rate, who are being documented, which is...
People are attacked.
So, that criteria needs to change. And all of y'all, all of y'all, and anybody else, when you guys are doing your field investigations, and you know you can't change the criteria? If you wanna advocate for some of these kids, tell these kids, look, son, or sister, they have criteria, I'm gonna prove you guys. I'm not gonna write this down as a gang stuff, but you need to stop running on this rail where it always is. And it's something these kids, y'all, you don't know, that you don't, y'all? It's nothing like now, and tell them, and tell them that you had a gang stuff. You guys, and it's something these kids, some of these kids, I don't even know. I don't even know about it, so I gotta educate myself with my brother's case. So, you guys, it's for educating young kids about the criteria, and y'all not willing to change it. But you have the power to say so. Stand up, Mr. Nelson, if you're a gang member, help, stand right up. And y'all have the right to change it, cause we hate them right here. That's what I'm mentioning, uh, what's going on in South San Diego, that's what was going on with the promotion of things, you guys are documenting this at Rapid Gray, or can't lock it up. Do something to change that criteria, it's unconstitutional. I wish you guys had up here with the...
You know, one of the things that we talked about, uh, you guys, that you guys, what you made sure that you suffered with the kids, is that our officers should govern and advise them. I'd like to tell you that, that's exactly what we're doing.
No, they're not.
As long as I can tell you about your advice, that's exactly what we're doing, that's what we're doing, and we're letting them know, because we know what they document, we're all about the perfection.
They're lying, their officers are lying.
Take that color off, take the color thing off, take this association off. I grew up in this park my whole entire life, I haven't, I don't want to go there, I want to stay where I'm at. But I'm gonna make you feel free to walk down the street with my brother and my cousin to be a document, because they got a red hat. I shouldn't have to take off my hat off a down the street. And these kids, I'm gonna use some of them, and they all know, they all done it. I know some of these guys in here, constantly documenting these guys, these guys pulled me over, and I don't have tickets. They need to stop the criteria, if there is, just kill them, I believe. So, for all access, we, when this happens, against the criteria, we need everybody to show up.
He said, when, it takes three criteria to, uh, not...
Unconstitutional criteria, say that.
So, even on the very first one, he said, I can go to the parents, because we don't want to document.
Not true, not true.
You guys ranked the children at the anti-Trump rally, that sounds true.
In addition, we have to be aware of this, Dr. Shifan, remember, which, uh, the advocate, we're guiding this.
We know. She's a part of the community, we know.
We see her.
We see her.
We have that dialogue all we have now, because we are about to perfection, I'll give you some analogies. If you do prefer to have the best cardiologist, definitely, if you have a heart attack, or if you just prefer to prevent the heart attack. I think everybody agree, we prefer to prevent the heart attacks. And we're, we would all prefer to make sure that crime doesn't happen, that somebody can address that.
Next.
Send that one back to the right.
I think you're a professional for a reason.
So, I have, I have three, I have three sons. They all were documented. Trying to talk about talking about, uh, all of them, in their sleep. So, from day one, I've been fighting for this criteria, for gang documentation. From day one, I, I feel just like you do. I think it's unjust, I think we need to take a look at it, I don't like the way it is right now, so the commission is looking for it, to deal with it. I've been dealing with this a long time, as far as documentation is concerned. When I first started Black Number Nine, the first thing we did was make sure that the young kids, uh, was, they were notified before they was talking about getting documented.
But they're not.
And if I was to be a lawyer till 14, so I'm still worried as hard as I can to mean what you're talking about. So, I'm agreeing with you, that's true. I agree with that too. But let me tell you, let me tell you what it is, it's not the police department, it's from the state. It's cow gangs, and it's cow gangs, and it's a criteria.
Oh, so he is trying to get us down.
So, I believe that everybody is trying, and you're talking about doing, and I think you're right, it does need to change, I don't think it's right. I stand up now, and you said, I'm gonna say it, but I think that it's...
Next, next speaker. What? Well, we don't need a mic.
We're going to come back here on Thursday for the wars and viewpoint, um, discussion, so, 6:30, child, 6 o'clock. We're gonna be back here for two hours. So, I want to see everyone back here on Thursday at 6:00.
Is this the town hall we're talking about? Oh, okay. Girl, I just knew something was happening. Well, great job.